There's a law enforcement update. I just didn't, by the time they got it to me, we'd already think it was printed. Gentlemen, is my sound okay? Thank you.
Yep, sounds good.
Councilman Major.
You.
Good. Councilman, Councilman Doakos.
Okay.
Under the weather. I know Councilman Merja will be here. I sent him a text message at the same time I texted Councilman Howard. He's in, you're in his report.
Yeah, I know.
Yes. Councilman Merja.
Mr. Mayor.
Do you have to walk by the elevator to get the smell of your old job?
Don't miss it. Especially don't miss it on days like yesterday and today.
Oh, I don't doubt that at all.
Rich, you made it.
You made it, yep. My mom even reminded me.
Good.
Of course, I don't, is there a camera show in the audience today?
Not tonight.
She's gonna be upset because she's just waiting to watch it.
Wonder if I could turn this around? Mel is at the school board. Well, Melody's, Melody's on board now. She's gonna hang with us for a little bit and then head to the school board meeting.
Maybe we'll be done before they start.
Could very well be. Depends upon how many questions we have.
Your lips to God's ears on that.
Did you hear?
Melody, I was able to share the reports and agenda on the live stream in a link on the comments.
He's home sick.
Excellent. That sounds great.
And I had to put the people up home on the speaker system, so if we had a vote or something like that, they could hear. Although I have enough, we have enough of a quorum, but.
I mean, I could've stayed home where it's cool. All that's cool in here.
Nice in here.
It is cool here.
I'm envious because it's about eighty-five degrees in here.
It's sixty-six degrees in here. Mike, would you turn the air conditioners off? Would you turn the air conditioners off or set them back up to sixty-nine? All right, when we're done, I don't have, my key won't open that thing. Tom doesn't trust me with the key. I got a key that says it's supposed to work, but it doesn't work. Hi, Mel. We'll get through here and get you to the meeting, hopefully, otherwise we know you're gonna be leaving us.
Yep, that's the plan.
Okay.
I did, yeah. I looked at it at home. What's that?
Chris, for those of us who are online, can you announce who, what council members are present?
Here with me right now are council members Merja, Howard, and Major. And then can you see who's online with you, Mel? Okay. Thank you, Steve, for putting that up.
Yep.
What time we got, people?
I have twenty-eight.
I have six twenty-eight. Mickey is wrong.
That's Alexa meantime.
Yes. Atomic Mickey is wrong. He's been too close to Chernobyl. Make sure your phones are off. All right, everybody, I show six thirty on my clock. If those present would rise, we'll say the call me to order, say the pledge allegiance. Councilman Merja, take us away.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is to open the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget and fiscal year twenty-twenty-one assessments. This is a different public hearing as this hearing will remain open through our next meeting for public comment to be presented and such, so.
And the amendments got put in here from our last meeting, the last couple meetings.
That last, those were on last year's budget.
Those were on last year's budget.
Those were last, yep. That was to close out fiscal twenty, nineteen twenty. This is twenty-twenty-one. So those who are present here with us, Mel, are Rich Luski, Phil Spektold, and Public Works Director Mike Mapus. We will keep the meeting open through our August nineteenth, six thirty meeting, at which time a taxpayer may appear to be heard for or against any part of the budget. Hearing will continue from day to day and will be concluded in the final budget adopted by resolution at our city council meeting on September first, twenty-twenty. For further information, you could contact our city finance officer, Jody Rogers, at four six six two five one zero. So council members, before you, a brief synopsis from last year, a mill last year generated twenty-one hundred and ten dollars. A mill this year is generating two thousand and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. So the value of the mill dropped. This is not a reevaluation year, so that's next year, so that's where we're at. Um, we, Department of Revenue, they, they set the value. Yes, that is correct. Correct.
Well, because we're still not using it.
We are.
We are.
Well, we are, we're to where we're maxed, yes. Um, we are, last year they levied ninety-nine mills. Ninety-six point six nine, this year it's ninety-three point, or ninety-eight point eight, ninety-nine point eight-five, and the two extra mills are for last year's. We're taking the mills from last year's emergency that we couldn't get on last year's taxes, levying them on this year's taxes, okay? So when it comes to our budget, our mill levies are allowed for two things, the general fund and the fire department. So for fire service this year, we are levying six mills for a total estimated revenue tax there, as you can see, and ninety-three point eight-five mills will be what is levied for the general fund. There is no increase in the street frontage cost, tree sidewalk costs, street maintenance costs.
The owner, gas tanks money.
We're still waiting to hear from that on the entitlement monies from the state. We have not been told what's, what's to come on that. So and it, it is. So last year, ninety-six point six nine mills generated on a house of fifty thousand dollar value with three lots was eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and one cent. This year, the ninety-nine point eight-five mills will generate eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and fourteen cents for an increase of two dollars and thirteen cents on a fifty thousand dollar house. On a hundred thousand dollar home with four lots, the increase this year would be four dollars and twenty-seven cents. On a two hundred K house with four lots, the increase would be eight dollars and fifty-four cents. We were allowed by code a one point, one point oh weird number, cost of living increase in things, so that is figured into here as well. Yes. Yes. That is all street frontages from what I've been told.
Can you restate the question, Mr. Mayor?
Yep. What was that?
Could you restate the question? It's hard to hear the, the audio.
I'll ask, I'll ask Jody. Jody, on the street front footage, if I live on a corner lot, am I paying just front footage or am I paying for an inside footage?
Just front footage.
Just front footage.
Just, just the footage for where the front door is.
Right, whatever, just, just the one that you've always been assessed normally, it's where your front, front door is.
Okay. Thank you, Jody.
Yep.
We have played this very, very conservative, we're as close to last year as we possibly can be. There's some minor changes in other, in the other side of things, because when you go to sewer, water, and garbage, those are enterprise funds, and they are funded by the assessments and the monthly costs and monthly fees associated with that. At this time, we do not see any increase in those in garbage or sewer, depending upon what happens with our P E R with Gray West and Water for the potential new projects. Once we know where we're at later, later on, after the first year and legislative session gets going, we may have to look at an increase in water rates to, to help cover that load. Do you, and you, if you look at your graphs, you can see that the general fund expenditures, the majority of it is law enforcement, is our contracted law enforcement. It is. It is what it is. It is our most expensive contract, and if you go to the next page where you go to our general fund revenue for our totals, you can see where our real estate property taxes come in right in the, between one ninety and two hundred thousand. And then you go all the way down to the right-hand side on that graph, and you're gonna see state entitlements right there. So if we lose entitlement dollars, we, we, yes, any bit of entitlement dollars we lose has a direct effect on the general fund.
To clarify, these are, they're labeled entitlements, but they're actually a tax collected by the citizen, on the people who spend money. They're a tax collected by the city. Jody, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're taxed collected by the city, the state holds in a fund, and then the state pays it back to us to put in our general fund.
Right, they're actually not a tax, they're fees.
They're fees, yes.
They're fees, but, but other than that, that's correct, Stuart.
Not an entitlement.
No.
I know it's what it's called, but I wanted to clarify. And that, and that changed about, what, Jody, twenty years ago?
No, it hasn't even, it was like two legislative sessions ago, they decided to change the name. It's really House Bill one, one twenty-four. It was done back in two thousand, was when they actually did it, what, they did it to streamline things, but that now it's pretty long, low hanging fruit.
Yep. And you can bet that we'll be at the legislature with M M I and our, our people to fight for those dollars. No, it is not. These are.
It's a good marketing idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A clever marketing idea on the side of the state. So as we look through this, you guys, I want, you know, and Phyllis, Rich, you guys, I can bury you in paperwork if you'd like some to go through, and if you can't read at night, want some heavy, easy reading. In the nutshell, it's about eight dollars and fifty-four cents for a guy like me on my house, okay?
Same.
There's no wild extravagant spending going on, things along like that, so. I think it's a pretty tight budget that Jody helped me put together, or Jody put together with my help, however you want to put it. But I, I've spent more time with her on this than I have so far, so. If you guys have no other questions tonight about it, we will leave this here open and move on to our next item on our agenda. Any further questions, you guys? Nope. All right, before you, you have the minutes of the meeting from our last meeting, which was held by Zoom. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
I have a motion from Councilman D to approve the minutes as presented. I have a second from Councilman Major. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes stand approved. Request to be out of state. Anybody?
No.
I'm heading to West Yellowstone, but that's as close to getting out of state as I'm gonna be, out Thursday, back Friday, so. We have no unfinished business ahead of us. We have no new business ahead of us, so we'll move into our reports, and your summary report in front of you shows no law enforcement report, but I do have one because it showed up this afternoon after I had put together my, my report. So from the law enforcement, from one July twenty to July thirty-one, there was eight traffic citations and four arrests, and the sheriff's office had a total of seventy-eight calls in Shoto, in addition to the dozen reports from up above. There are also many additional calls that they had within the, you know, miles, within a mile or so of town. So they had a pretty busy month of July, taking care of things. I have the form, there's no names listed or anything like that, it's just a summary like you get on the radio. From the city judge, their report runs from seven twenty twenty through eight twelve. They collected twenty-three hundred and forty-nine dollars in receipts during the period, and some of these receipts are tickets back to two thousand and eighteen that are being collected still, you know, on fines and that. Seven cases pending, three cases disposed, and six were closed. On the city attorney criminal side, from seven seven to eight five, there were four convictions with sentences, four cases pending, and one dismissal. On the civil attorney side, consulted with the Helena planning staff, are, we are ADA transition plan requirements and processes, discussing with myself and Jody regarding the initiation process for the city of Shoto. This is our ADA plan that we're trying to do as best we can in-house. We've got Mike working on part of it, Steve, Councilman Howard, working on part of it, Jody, Tom, and I working on part of it, and Steve D working on part of it. In hopes that we can put this together, City Cascade did their own, and we're kind of following their footprint, saved them some significant money. It was approved by the funding sources as being adequate, so if we can do the same thing, save us ten to twenty thousand dollars, we would gladly do that. Hopefully, we can have something together and ready to put out to the public October, November for one-one implementation day. Also, city, city attorney civil, Ms. Stutz was successful in having the district court dismiss Mr. Bumgarner's attempt to appeal the Board of Adjustments denial of his post-construction request for a variance regarding the retaining wall that he constructed on the Shoto city property. We've had follow-up discussions with myself, the finance officer, and the zoning administrator regarding the next step, and we have sent a letter to Mr. Bumgarner asking him to remove his wall by September seventeenth. Our civil attorney has also begun initial review of the revolving loan fund materials with the intention of reviewing options for addressing delinquent and otherwise non-performing loans, see what our options are out there. And Councilman Major had made an inquiry regarding the subject of possible community K ordinance, and so he's going to anticipate getting into that in the next few days, and over the course of coming weeks, we'll have some more updates for us on that.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on that report briefly.
Yes.
Um, so with regards to the revolving loan fund, is the civil city attorney looking just within the context of the C D B G requirements as they're written, or is he looking at potentially changing those? Has he considered that yet? Do you know?
I don't believe there are any C D B G.
Yeah, I don't believe there are C D B G requirements there. What he's looking at is what type of indemnifications are in their personal guarantees and such.
But I know we were, if I recall correctly, when we looked at it from the Port Authority's perspective, there was some restriction, some weird restriction, maybe it's not C D B G, but it was tied to the original grant funding that provided the revolving loan fund that tied our hands a little bit.
All right, go ahead, Stuart.
All right. It actually has to do, if I remember right, when Lyle and I looked at it, it has to do with the fact that the city is not a lending agency, and it's basically a grant instead of a loan, it's just a grant that has to be paid back. And it, it's, I mean, we call it a loan, but it's not legally, because we don't take any collateral.
Basically, Councilman Doakos, what we're after is to see if there's a way that the city can recoup some of the dollars that are seeing out there that have not been paid on that are delinquent, so that we can get them out, turn around, and get them into hands and get them performing again.
Yep, no, I'm, I'm all on board.
Yeah, we have more money owed to us than we have available to loan out at this time.
Yep.
So as we move to Public Works, Mike did get us a report, but as it says, we've been working with our local contractors on sewer and water lines, grinding and preparing for chip seeing on our roads, also working for a larger project for Tenth Avenue Northeast and a potential water main to be put down that road, and there's a copy of that in your packets to take a peek at. There's no water main down that avenue. It would give the opportunity to loop the system in, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, so that the hospital in Skyline Lodge would have water in case of a break someplace else.
So you're, you're talking northwest?
Northwest, I mean, yes, all the way behind the school, sorry. I know. Jody was pressuring me to get this done.
That's okay, I'm just wondering if it's northeast.
No, it's northwest. Estimates would bring somewhere between six and seven thousand dollars a year in annual revenue, just in base rate. Be the hope that if some people wanted to hop onto the city water for their household, they would do that and then maintain their wells for irrigation purposes.
So you're talking Snyder Row, is, which is what they call that whole.
Yep. Yep, and there's a map in, there's a map in there. Should be.
So Mike, that'd be everything north of me, basically, right?
Correct.
But not north of Skyline.
Nope. You guys may not have it because it was not in your packets, it came out later in the day.
Sorry.
So I apologize for that. Um, water, so in looking at Mike's water report, we're losing less water, correct, Mike? By the numbers, yes. And the numbers never lie. We lost fifty-one, so. I would venture to guess. The, the glory.
There is a big one.
So Councilman Major, in May, we lost sixty-five percent. In June, we lost fifty-five percent, and in July, we've lost fifty-one percent.
And I know like a, a good efficiency for that would be like a twenty, twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, you muted yourself, it looks like.
I'm unmuted, sorry. I shouldn't lay things on my keyboard. So other than that, the guys at City Works, Public Works have been busy getting things ready. By, Mike thinks by the end of the month, they will start on our chipping, we get. Yep. And I'll, I'll come to that here in a second. City Hall, Jody's report, preliminary budget, again, full-time activity, it is the prelim, but it's pretty close to where we will be. As she said, we have the two mills that are there for last year's emergency. We'll be doing ninety-eight point eight-five, ninety-nine point eight-five mills this year. Again, state legislative session this year in Helena, the additional dollars we used to fund from our office from entitlement dollars, and I'll start to figure out a better way of saying that rather than entitlements, unless Jody tells me otherwise. It passed back through us. From public financial side for the public works, as we said, these are all funded through their enterprise funds of water, sewer, and garbage. The lines are full funded, or these lines are funded by revenue generated from the monthly service charge, and these funds are in adequate shape. There's a potential for an increase in water rate as we move forward with the projects that we have been working with, with the engineers about. That would be the new potential well site and new lines in certain areas of the northeast side of town. Any rate change would come in late this fiscal year as we wait to learn more from the legislature. Those would be our department reports, and I am open for questions on them, or Councilman Major, you want to start us off with anything in your world?
Sure, really, all I'm, as it, as mentioned, I've been focusing on the urban decay, and so the next step, as I've asked for public comment to be sent to me or to drop off at the city office, the next step is for me to meet with Jeff. I think we've identified Superior has a very good one. Really, what I'm looking for is something that we can put in that's defensible, legally if we have to, and so I don't want to just throw something up there, so I want Jeff to go through it a little bit with us, and then we'll send it off to M M I A, who would be the ones that would ensure it.
Yeah.
And, and so, once we get through that process, I plan on bringing something to the board and, and something that would be read and, you know, first reading, second reading.
Public hearing wise, correct, okay.
That's what I've been working on.
Okay, and I thought that the young man who came up and talked to you and interviewed you did a wonderful job and put together a very good thing on K F P B. And you can search that out on K F P B's web, or their Facebook page or their website and see Councilman Major there. Anything else? Councilman Howard?
Oh, I kind of started on some ideas and places to look with the ADA stuff. I don't think it's gonna be too hard, we've got a pretty good path to follow with Cascades, just identifying all the spots where we even don't need them. And then kind of working with Mike on that water line. He's probably waiting on me to get my number done.
I think he threw one in for you. Anything else?
No.
Councilman Merja?
Nothing really that has to do with the city, I do want to throw a thank you out there to everybody who assisted in the search for the young lady last week. Her mom contacted me and was pretty amazed that everybody in this part of the country either offered or threw up a picture or basically just got word out there, and she said that one of the people that actually reported on location came out of the Bob, got on their Facebook, and the first thing to pop up was a picture of the young lady, and so they called the sheriff's department and said, hey, this is where we saw them. So it was really nice to see social media used for something good. Other than that. No.
Councilman D?
Just want to give a brief shout out to Drew Hanson, her staff at the pool and the Lions Club, they ran a great season with the pool this year, despite the restrictions and, and everything else going on with, with COVID and all the, the enormous pile of regulations they have to deal with anyway. They, they did an excellent job this year and kept the pool off and open as much as possible, and so I think that's worth commending her and her staff on that. And if you haven't yet, buy a trip of the month ticket from the Lions Club because it does directly help support the does directly help support the, the pool here in town, and make sure that we can stay open and keep it open because it is pretty well volunteer funded, and the city chips in quite a bit, but without the support of the Lions Club and our supporters who help buy trip of the month club tickets and stuff, we wouldn't be able to do it from year to year.
Thank you, Councilman D. From the mayor's office, there, I will tell you guys as Councilman, as you're out perusing through your codes, if you come across a code that is antiquated, outdated, or needs changing, I would tell you to print it off, and in the council room there back at City Hall, there's a magic box that says ordinances to be changed or done away with, and so when Sterling goes through our codes and gets all that back, and we can do this in one fell swoop, we don't have to go back and remember what code it was, print it off, highlight what you want, write your notes on it, throw it in there, and we'll make sure that that gets taken care of. Been writing a lot of letters, and it's strange to have to write letters to people, but if putting things in writing makes it indisputable, and you can't, you can't twist the letter, you've got it in black and white. So I would tell all you guys as council members, if you have an issue with someone out there and you're worried about it, take the time to do your correspondence and writing, get it to us, we'll keep it on the record and go from there. One of the things Mike was talking about is with COVID-19, we've entered into a contract with a company to test our wastewater, and they will do four tests a month, two tests a month, every two weeks, and they will be able to let us know if there's COVID in our community. Whether, and whether it's cycling up or whether it's cycling down. First sample gets delivered tomorrow? Okay, we'll pull our first sample tomorrow, and then it goes back to Bozeman? Okay, so they're, alright, when Levi and I were talking, so it'll go back to Massachusetts for their, for testing at MIT. And it was, we talk long and hard about this, this is something that we, we know that we have one case in the county, we don't know where it's at, but this will give us an indication of what's in the wastewater. This is a program that was put together in the Israelis, from what I've read about it, were the first people that came up with it. You can track COVID in your wastewater, you can track the common cold in your wastewater, you can track the flu in your wastewater. It will not tell you who has it, but it will tell you that it's in your community and whether it's peaks and valleys as to what's going on, so. The company's called BioBot, and they are working with hundreds of communities in 42 states. Mike and I looked into this way back in March or April, and we started reaching out and the price was cost prohibitive, and all of a sudden the prices dropped significantly, and these are dollars we can reimburse, the, the federal government will reimburse us for. And then last but not least, Jody, Tom, and Tracy, thank those guys for putting up with me in the office as much as I am, getting things done. We are working, we've got through the budgeting part of it, we'll answer questions, if somebody wants a copy of the budget, all 40 some pages of it, we do have them available at City Hall, come down and get a copy. Report wise, I forgot to tell you guys, the park guys have been busy, 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 and knock on wood, things are going good right now. Rich, you have another show coming up?
No, last one was Wednesday.
Okay, last show was Wednesday, alright.
Sounds like it was a good one though.
Yeah, about 40 cars.
Forty cars, wow. Phyllis, anything for the go to the order tonight? Rich, any public comment tonight? Hearing none? We will be adjourned until our next meeting, which is two weeks from tonight, and we will be back here at the pavilion.
Is that September 2nd?
September 1st. Hold on, let me double check.
No, you're right, because if, because, yeah.
It's the first.
Yep, September 1st, alright, thanks all.